The shed, like right behind your driveway, right?
Yes.
At the end of the driveway?
Correct.
Since your driveway, your garage is on the side of the house.
Because on Bailey, there's one right there. You can see the backside of the shed from Centennial.
You said you found nineteen other sheds on the side of houses.
At least, there's at least nineteen. There's ninety-one throughout the new site that would go over here. I can't tell you how many are in compliance or not, but there's a lot of things that, whether here nor there, I, I'm just trying to get a shed built, and it feels like I'm trying to move a bridge over Interstate ninety.
In this, so, yes, I just want to bring this up in context of what we're saying, because it has been a while. If you remember, you know, St. Ariel, we have talked about it. CBA hasn't acted on it until recently. For this in particular, is there a way that we can help anybody who has applied for a shed on the side yard to be able to appeal for a variance without a fee for that one specific exception at this point in time? So the CBA can rectify the situation if it makes sense.
Can I ask one other question before people just talk? When we gave the village administrator powers, correct, did we not give him zoning administrator powers?
He's the only administrator.
So technically, because of that ordinance we passed, what, what's the power through that one? So to your point, they've already applied, they've gone through the permit rather than going through the ZBA and all the other stuff.
And we've discussed that this, this is an issue that needs.
Correct. Couldn't Jay, couldn't Jay authorize this to be built based on his power? Oh, yes.
Well, I don't know if he could authorize the variance itself, but could you authorize the waiving of a fee for the variance application for this type of a variance, specifically only for this type of a shed on the side of a house for this type of application?
I think if that were the consensus of the board, I would be willing to, but I have to get a legal opinion from Attorney Schuster. Not sure this is the right time to run that kind of detail. Be honest, anything you might ask?
How long ago did you pay the five hundred bucks?
I did not, and that's when the next meeting, I brought in the list of all the addresses and the sheds. Because if they didn't pay five hundred, I didn't feel I should have to. I don't mind paying the permit fees and stuff. That's not the, the point. It's just, I'm trying to do the right thing, and I feel it's one of those old saying, no good deed goes unpunished. That's what it feels like.
So what timeline are we looking at? Will you be able to get an answer before it's sold?
Come back, please.
Well, it's been nine months.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's embarrassing.
And then if you look at the neighbor, that's embarrassing. If you look at, if you look at the neighbor right here, there's a lot of sheds, and then even that, there's a house right across the street. There's a swimming pool that's right in the same spot.
That's our house.
They're right there. And that, that swimming pool does have a permit. No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that it was out of compliance. I'm saying, go further my point. If it's okay to put a swimming pool there, what's the difference between a swimming pool and a shed?
Can we add this as an item tonight under new business, and it's not something we vote on, but to discuss, and then potentially give direction to Jay to follow up with Mr. Schuster and find out the realities of being able for the fee itself? Just, are we okay with that?
Absolutely.
Is it be a new business topic? Is that okay?
I have a tip coming in. I can guarantee you that. But, you know.
Well, and you know what? That's, that's fine.
I'm just saying that this is not the end of this conversation, because
I understand.
You didn't want to do what you wanted to do, which you have to enter up there, inform neighbor of what's gonna happen.
I don't mind informing the neighbors. I didn't.
I'm just gonna tell you, he's gonna be here.
And that's not important.
Wondering why they're not holding the ordinance that, that's there. So it, it took the first step, the second, almost the end step.
Correct.
And if the board votes to approve it, then.
But if he wants to sue, then you know what? I'll be honest with you, Mr. Mayor.
You already told him this yesterday.
I will sue. And I'm gonna say, but.
Is he even two hundred and fifty feet from our specific location? He is from ours. He might be from theirs, but he may not be from ours. But see, he'll deny ours. He won't want it done.
I understand. This is a long topic. I'm sorry.
It's not, it's not something that could.
It's not gonna get fixed tonight.
Right.
Absolutely. We're close. We've moved it quite a bit further than it ever has been. It's just a line which had came in from the ZBA. It was contradictory to everything that we were trying to accomplish. Okay, so if they passed it, I don't think you're, I don't know, you would have been able to put anything where you want to put it.
Correct.
It is with Mr. Bennett Haley.
It is would have. It would accommodate a corner loss, but not a side load per se.
All right. We're gonna move on from this one?
Yeah. Thank you.
It'll be on the ZBA's next agenda. Bonnie Angle, did you?
I don't have an agenda. I just wanted to visit.
Kupri Committee.
Yeah. Oh, gosh. Good evening, everybody on board. Obviously, you know, my name is Scott from the Hampshire Kupri Committee, and we are here tonight to announce that after much discussion of the current COVID situation and recent different phase restrictions mandated by the state of Illinois, the committee has decided that the health and safety of our festival, participants, entertainers, volunteers, and staff could not be guaranteed. Therefore, the committee regretfully announces the cancellation of the 2020 Kupri Days Festival. It was not an easy decision, but we believe correct, the correct decision for everybody in general. We believe health and safety is our first priority. Too many obstacles for the fest, and just a couple of them out here. Safe guard guidelines are mandated yet as far as groups and things like that, so we're concerned with that. Number one, a liquor license is not able to get obtained. With the COVID pandemic in the states, our sponsorships are very low. We're at one-third of what we used to be at this point in time. We cannot and will not operate with that type of fund shortage. We know that the village has funds in the 2020 budget for the festival. We hope that we will still be able to receive those funds if and when, in addition to the funds for the two thousand, or the 2021 budget. And what our theme next year would be, would be bigger and better in 2021. That's what I have.
Thank you, sir. Gina, if you have something to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of give everyone, I know Jay's gonna give an update, but just kind of give everyone an update on how Kate is doing itself with open seating and things like, and all the new guidelines for safety. It has been a challenge. And I'm sure Michelle will attest. There is a lot of, you know, I don't work. You know, I'm working a lot. So it's, you know, we want to make sure, and I'm sure Michelle and all her partners want to make sure we are following safety guidelines. Health is the main concern for our employees and our, you know, the community itself. We are very thankful for the park districts. Offer the picnic tables that has helped immensely, because now that the swimming pool is put in effect, every bar across the nation has purchased picnic tables, and they're on back order. So picnic tables are the new toilet paper, I guess. So we are very grateful for the park districts. Use of the tables. The food trucks have been outstanding. The community has answered. Hundreds and hundreds of people come to our house, and people we've never seen in our business before are now visiting our business and giving us business. And the feedback on the food truck is, is great. So when the food trucks are there, we do brought black cotton table place for safety issues, because the truck drivers don't have any parking spaces, and I don't want anybody to get hit, you know, waiting in the street or whatever. And we at Speedy's done the bar area out a little bit further. And so for safety, you know, we have to continue that, that to be in place when we have food trucks. We have a family area which has no alcohol in it allowed, and people have been utilizing family areas, so that's been good to see. And that's where we're at. So just wanted to let everybody know, and thank you.
Michelle, did you have a?
Um, I think, no, I think you're excellent. I didn't prepare any good tonight.
Anyone to sign up?
Yes, Matthew Mariani.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So moving on to current event stuff, I was very heartened to see the village board publish its letter in response to the ongoing civil unrest and civil rights movement in the United States. I was very heartened to see you all take an active stance in that regard. Partially wondering what y'all's thoughts on next steps in this, you know, ongoing process are for engaging in community conversations and, you know, and the big tough questions, you know, about race and racism and so on and so forth. And then also, you know, Hampshire's own history and involvement in it. You know, I've been here four years, been blessed to get to know many people who have lived in this town for, you know, two, three, sometimes even four times my amount in years, and not all of them paint the prettiest picture that I would call proud past of our community. And I think a lot of them tried to be swept under the rug as, oh, that's long gone and not part of our community, but it's still part of the DNA that shaped its town that has moved people out of this town and is part of the history and legacy of this community. And if we just choose to say that's only in the past and it does not implicate the current present, then we as a community will never grow and never be able to truly listen to one another. And these not-so-fun conversations that we keep seeing get way out of hand on the community page will only continue to be even worse and worse. You know, I'm, I'm used to working with PD and fire, and I've seen a lot of language on our page that would make even some of our staunchest people blush a little. And I think if you are, if you as a board are serious about engaging in these conversations, now is the time to make concrete action plans to put in place ways to have them that are safe, that are open, and that also recognize that this is not something that is just going to vanish overnight or become something that changed where everyone's mind gets in the same page and we see koo bai on in the middle of the night.
Thank you, sir.
Gina.
Mr. Service. My, I'm guessing you probably already on the line here. Given our current climate, it's kind of old news, but we had a couple of big storms recently, and I know I've approached the board numerous times over many years about Park and Rin and the inadequate drainage at that end of the street. I understand it's old. I understand. But I have been told in the past that it was next on the list, and nothing has been done yet. I know it takes time and money, but it is something that sorely needs to be addressed. I, I know there's no immediate fix for it. I, I understand that, but it's pretty much an annual problem at this point, and I ended up with thousands of gallons of water in my backyard again, so I don't know. Just, I just wanted to bring it, bring it up again, start the conversation. If there's something that I need to do further, I'm happy to do that. I know other residents have gotten attention by, you know, throwing, throwing out language and, you know, other stuff, and I don't want to have to do that. I, I mean, like I said, I've been coming here for, I think since two thousand and six when I bought the house, and so I'd like to see something progress.
All right, very good. Thank you. What, what is your address?
One, two, three Park.
Two, three.
Right across from the animal hospital.
I can validate, I was there for this last one with Nate Lowen pumping water out of the backyard.
Yeah.
And there's actually a pipe from the storm system that dumps water into her backyard directly from the storm system, not including everything that happens in the front yard, that dumps everything into the yards and her crawl space. So we had two water pumps plus her son pump, and it took a couple of hours just to try to go back down to where it was. Not immediately.
I'm happy to share pictures after it's all over.
Mayor, if I can just add, in response to the board at the last meeting, we are scheduling for the, the June eighteenth board meeting, a presentation by EEI on the flood, about the source water program in the village. It'll be about a fifteen-minute presentation and a huge comments. It'll be on the agenda on the eighteenth at your request. So it'll be an overview of the village, if anybody's interested.
Miss Mike, anyone else?
That's it for the evening.
All right. Fantastic. You should have the meeting minutes from May twentieth, twenty twenty, twenty first, sorry. Please review those for any changes. This is, this is correction. So it's on the streetscape vote. I voted present and not aye. Not nay, not aye, I voted present. Trustee calls move to approve the streetscape design concept proposal for playing resource fee for a thousand dollars.
Oh, yes.
I voted present. So you're staying. Which is allowable under Robert's rules. So you need to listen to him. I can go on a reason to why if you want, but I don't think anybody cares. In the record. Any other changes? I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the change on page three under streetscape design.
So votes.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold. Um, village manager's got a few items in this report.
Mayor, we have a motion to reappoint Joe Shaw to the zoning board appeals for term ending in twenty twenty-five.
Any questions about Mr. Shaw's appointment?
All terms five years? Yes?
Do you say?
Yes, all terms for five years.
Five, that's twenty twenty-five. That's five. There's, there's not all, I think they're staggered. All right. I will entertain a motion then to reappoint Mr. Joe Shaw to the ZBA for term ending in twenty twenty-five.
So moves.
On, on favor?
Or is that a second?
Wait, next to the second. Second.
All in favor?
I have a question. I have a point of discussion real quick. I guess, I don't know Mr. Shaw personally. I just know the interaction I had with him when I was on the park board. There were some things brought up that concerns me that I don't want to raise to the board. I'm sure he's a fine gentleman that served on the board of the zoning board, but during that conversation, this was in regards to the Veterans Memorial, and we were trying to work out how much money was this gonna be? What could the park board contribute? How do we make this happen? And there are a couple of times where it was brought up that the zoning board had done some favors for people to pass some permits, and that they owed favors such as free concrete and other items. So I have a problem with us looking to, I have a problem with the whole zoning board of appeals if it's true that they passed favors for people and then things that they're going to be, I don't know that it's just a him thing. I think it's a entire number of appeals that I have a problem with that actually happened. But that was said to us by this gentleman who was on the zoning board. In the open, in the open, in a recorded meeting, that we've done favors to people. They, they owe us companies. And so I just wanted to have that open discussion. I, I'm sure he's a fine gentleman, and I just have a concern that that, it was, it was like it was no deal.
I mean, is possible he was sort of blustering or.
And I, it may, but it wasn't, there wasn't a mixed message.
He will, weren't making final decisions, so they would have made, in favor they would have done for someone. It would have had also been sort of a conspiracy, not a conspiracy.
Whatever it would be then.
And so we're.
But I haven't flown to the board. And this is, yeah, this doesn't be saying that, that a resident or a business came to us and said that this is what's going on. This was.
It's his point.
This is his, that we don't need as much money as we think, because we've done some favors. You know, we did some favors for people, and they owe us some free, they owe us things like free concrete, so that'll bring our cost down, and so.
I remember I specifically mentioned one. Single. Let's get a look at that. I, I don't, I don't know, Joe, you talk a lot of stuff about, you just use the most political language. But as far as, it's, 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 it came in, I'm not sure what the zoning board did, you're still. There was, I was just reading what was happening in the board, but I, I would be shocked if the, the board, the ZBA, planning commission did anything outside of parameters of approving their, their project. They, as, as, as Joe talks, he, yeah.
Oh, in a favor, and they. To do a copy for the veterans, that's certainly because the board overlooked something.
No, he was very particular that the zoning board did favors for them, so they owe him a favor, and he can get the concrete. It was, there was no mixed message. You can floor to the recording.
So is that enough for you to?
I'm going to say, I'm going to say no, but I wanted it to be, I wanted the board to have the information. I didn't do an investigation, and I don't, I'm not claiming the ZBA did any favors. I'm not saying any of it's true. It may have been bluster. I'm not saying he's a bad individual. I'm just saying it's not good representation to go to another governmental meeting saying that he's done favors for people to, 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 so that, that's why I'm, I'm not making accusations that it's true.
Sure. Well, I, I mean, I guess I'm, I mean, certainly we don't want that kind of language going around. I mean, it's a reprimand, but he has served on the ZBA for a long time.
Long time.
Long time, right?
So there's, he's their secretary. He's their secretary.
There's a place to stay long enough to know better.
Exactly.
The way.
And to put it on a recording that they are, that they've done enough favors that they're gonna get this built cheaply or, or get a lot of free stuff is wrong.
I agree. I agree. I, I would think, I would be against my, just not be in favor of putting him on with a representative. Just, I mean, he is a, you know, serves this country. He does the Memorial Day thing, and I, you know. He's an interesting character, there's no doubt, but it's not like we have people standing at the door, you know, banging. That would be my only thing is, it's hard. I mean, he's committed.
And that's why I started saying, I'm not saying this is a representation of him. I think it's a figure of someone.
The camera's working.
Appeals thing, and he feels that's what they were to do.
But I would just think we should have. What the hell, I've only four here, and so one, one gentleman making a statement, because we, we consider that. So most of the zoning board members are relatives of the new within us, I can remember here. Carl Christiansen, Joe, right, the two holders of the line. Paint hole zoning board that brush at all. So, no, he's the one, Joe? I mean, we voted.
Oh, they're gonna vote.
Yeah.
No. Um, you're, you're far. Thank you.
For somebody that's been on a, a committee that long, and been around that long, you have to tell somebody something? Is he gonna listen? Somebody that's been around that long's gonna openly come out and say that? I, I heard it. I heard the whole recording. Do you think he's gonna listen to it?
You know, part of me thinks it was, you know, I remember, because I took over for you trying to help try to get that.
And I was the one that sat in those committees trying to convince them, you guys don't have a clue what you're doing on concrete. Let's get focused.
And, and so I think, you know, I would, it would be reasonable for me to assume that Joe was trying to play Big City, you know, thinking that he was a politician, and I don't know. I think it, I think it could be interpreted as a reasonable sort of overreach by someone who was trying to get something done, you know, in a way that they probably shouldn't. That, that's just my opinion. I, I've known Joe for a long time. Joe made a good start. Yeah. And it, it's, it's, it's different. That's why. Just.
All right. Well, we'll call a vote then.
Okay. Ms. Kelly?
No.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Ms. Kretcheck?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ooh, hi.
Two weeks. Hi.
What, you?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I will have a heartfelt conversation with Mr. Shaw.
He nicely came maybe and explained to the board or something about that whole schmeel was about.
Mayor, we have an ordinance adopting certain regulations governing the operation of mobile food vendors in the village. Uh, let me just say that after last week's discussion, we've attempted again to reach a, an ordinance that would make the board's favor. The changes in this, the remaining continues to be a hundred and fifty feet distance as we said at the last meeting, discussed at the last meeting. The changes in this ordinance, the, the only real change in this ordinance substantive is that it would, it would permit each truck to visit the village one day a week, one day a week for each truck. And as a separate item on the agenda, we're proposing that you consider setting fees separately so those fees can be adjusted periodically, so that not further the ordinance. Would that be the second?
So the fee is in here, and then the second motion is to take the fee out of here.
The fee is in another motion on the agenda.
It is. I already said the ordinance had the fee listed.
I just mentioned that because it's not in the ordinance. It's in the next question. So typically, we'll review our fees each year. So if we added the ordinance, we'd have to change the ordinance this year instead of our fee schedule.
So the only difference of this ordinance from what we already voted on last week is now it's only one day a week for kinder.
In substance, yes, there was also a little clarification, make sure that the ice cream truck is only charged fifty dollars for, for time, because they were kind of, they were locked in as food trucks. So we did create a different category for, for just the fee structure for it. And again, that's in the second motion.
Right, but for this motion, this ordinance, the only difference is the one day.
One day, yes. And the fee went up from one fifty to two fifty. Again, that's in the next, in the next item on the agenda. It's been proposed that become somewhat of a balancing factor for, for the board. Where else?
So the ice cream truck is not considered.
No, we're not open for discussion here.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I asked him, I asked him.
And a question for the board.
Eighteen. Eighteen.
Any questions from the, how much from the board?
Yeah, I mean, to, for people that didn't vote on the subject, is the one day a week the only reason why you voted? Know that we're voting on an ordinance that we already voted on. We voted on this la, the last meeting. It was voted down. Now we have it right back. The only difference is one day a week. Why are we voting on this again? Is that the reason everybody voted no?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I, I mean, I felt that, I think it was a bit of surprise, to be quite frank with you, to the people that voted know that, and that was part of the discussion with Mr. Schuster, I think, between meetings, that it's that he provided. I think we were running with the impression, and I'll take responsibility personally for not knowing what the outcome of a no vote would be. But I think there was a partial surprise that where we were left was there'd be absolutely nothing, and it would be free for us. So I think that was part of what was, you know, a surprise. So to answer your question, and I think that's probably, and I really, I thought with Jay and Josh and to Jeff perhaps, as to why it came back to us again, because I think ultimately, we would agree with this, and I think is, we don't want to leave it that way. So I, I will take responsibility for not knowing the outcome of the vote last night.
So was the, was the no vote, then for those that voted no last night, was the no vote because you didn't want food trucks at all? It was a no vote to say no food trucks?
Yeah, that, that, that's why I voted no, because I didn't want to start having fifteen food trucks all over town.
Specifically, when we're in a situation where we've got brick and mortar that are, and it forced Gina's argument that she presented, I think was, was fair and added to the conversation, but I think in general, during this pandemic, with, you know, revenues reduced by seventy-five percent or fifty percent, that bringing in competitors to the brick and mortar board, that was the fundamental principle why I was against it first, to end that issue. So, but, and I was surprised at the, at the, after the, it failed, that that's where it was left. And I, that was something I didn't anticipate, so I think that's.
And we talked about that during the meetings. We talked about the fact that this was too. We talked about the fact that this was to allow us to govern that type of business.
Government, right, but the, the last ordinance didn't have one day a week, but this was.
So your no vote was just because of the one day?
Yeah. I think food trucks are gonna be here, they're gonna, but I don't think they need to be, uh, an individual food truck doesn't need to be here two or three times a week right now.
We talked about it at one meeting to get the ordinance where it needed to be. We all agreed the ordinance was where it needed to be in the next meeting. Just call it to a vote, nobody brought up that needed to be up during that meeting, you know, so, before we went to a vote.
That's, that's not a choice of the.
No, not at all.
There was definitely, I guess.
We talked about whether or not it needed to be changed.
We can disagree. I, I think that there was certainly some, still some resistance that existed. I mean, I, my position hasn't changed.
I, I, I will tell you this, I was completely against, as against any type of ordinance governing food trucks, because that was my stance from the very, very beginning, which is why I, that the very first couple of lines we talked about. And then the more we talked, and the more about protecting local business and the value it brings to other businesses, this is a way for the, the village to, you know, have the ability to restrict, approve, all of that good stuff. And then for it to get voted down because people don't understand the law drives me crazy, and I'm sorry.
It's not, it wasn't written at one day a week, right?
No, it was, okay, so I'm not speaking directly, well, I'm not, I'm not blaming you for your.
I voted no, so you're.
I'm not blaming you for your reasons.
The whole reason was because it didn't limit it to one day a week.
Now, the whole reason was is because people thought that if they voted no, then it wouldn't allow food trucks, period.
That's why I voted no.
Yeah, and Mike, you, you can't claim to have clear knowledge of every single thing that we vote on, knowing what.
No, we talked about it for two meetings.
Not that specifically.
Not that specifically.
I know.
Because I was the exact, I was, I was a hundred percent opposed to this.
We talked for an hour on 150 frickin' feet from the door, or the property lot, or the bank, or, or the, or the coal bin, you know, that's what we talked about for an hour.
Or to two in the morning, or not to two in the morning, those are the details I think that we mostly focused on, uh, but.
We also talked about should a truck, food truck be allowed here every day of the week, and what's the difference between a food truck that does that versus a brick and mortar location, and should we limit the number of days a week that they should be?
But I don't know that there was agreement on that. That, that would be my only difference, at least, you know, I think there's half the board that was really control, and then, and then forced the board to, to like it, and so, I don't know if that answers your question, send us back, I've turned these off some of the things, that was, you know, why I think you might.
Yeah, I just, I know this one's about food trucks, but if we continue to vote on ordinances in the future and then find out that we don't like how, what that vote means, bring it right back the next meeting, that's dangerous, so.
I agree, it is, but that's.
So the, whether I'm.
It is a fair non-advantage, I'm just saying.
If anything, it should be a vote on a stretch, and then we say no, leave it out, that was the wrong vote, plus bring it back the very next meeting, that's dangerous, so.
Well, I would, and if it was a trend, I would think it was a problem, right, but you mean, seeing as it happened once, we're in the process of wrapping it.
It's happened twice since I've been here, not since you guys have been on the board, but it's been here twice.
Twenty seven years.
Twice in eight years?
I'm just saying, you've done it before.
Why was it, I don't even remember.
That was about.
I, I, I just don't like.
That was about, Charles, he raised.
He raised.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll stand on the corner, bang a Garber's candle, tell me if he's here at your house, seven o'clock at night, which feels, I can hear Cappanborough's music from my backyard.
You can hear us on the other side of the day.
I ignore you.
That's a good song. Selective. Right, other comments on, on the ordinance in front of us today? A taking, and I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 20-18, an ordinance adopting certain regulations governing the operation of mobile food vendors in the village.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Call, please.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Kajekin?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Motion passed, I vote.
Mayor, we have a motion to set the fee for operation of mobile food vendors in the village at $50 for ice cream trucks and $250 for food trucks.
All right. For you. For you.
Any question, comments on the fees?
That's a fee we agreed to last meeting.
Almost at 150 last meeting.
Why did it go up to 250?
It's just a proposal.
I'm, I'm asking, we talked to the board at 150, not being presented as a proposal, 250, why did it go up?
Discussion I had with Jay, uh, crisis too long. Want to go back to the original fee?
Pretty much you're passing now that we passed the food trucks, you know, the, the dollar amount should have been prior, uh, before this, before the food truck passage, but I think it's all right, that was okay with the 150.
Are we not comfortable with 250? Want to go back to the original?
250, I like it, I offered some.
As long as we keep the ice cream at 50, don't care what you do.
We'll keep the ice cream at 50.
You gotta sell a lot of ice cream bars.
Original?
I'm, I'm an original personally, but I have the majority of the board right now saying they don't really care.
I, I just kind of like to know, I mean, I understand the conversation, but is it just that, is it based on adoration, or does, I mean, why change this, kind of where I'm okay either way, but I just kind of.
Looking at, the, the truck coming in, it could come here one day a week, if you're charging in less than five, they could be here every week, if you're charging in five bucks a week. A brick and mortar store is paying a thousand, at least a thousand dollars a month, operating and employing people in our town, and I think for 250 bucks for the fee, it's not going to be orderless for food truck. And there's costs involved with the village, keeping track, making sure that they pay their place for eating things, just like everybody else.
I agree with that, I agree with that, I just think that that's, the fee structure should have been prior to voting for the food trucks.
Well, we talked about it in there, we talked about, we didn't have a food truck for the fee, uh, but.
No, we, we voted, we, we just voted for the food trucks and approved that, now we're voting for a fee, which should have been the other way around.
We talked about, we talked about the reasons why we kept them separate, so this would be the ability to raise them or lower them or manage them outside of the ordinance. And that, that's the reason, as I understand it, I mean, unless I'm wrong, but that's why I accept it.
I would say.
Two glasses.
Mr. Robinson still with us?
Still here.
Has glasses. All right. I will entertain a motion to set a fee for operation of a mobile food vendor, uh, for food truck at $250 per year and an ice cream truck at $50 per year. So move.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Klein, be to it, sir.
Yeah, I know she did.
Yeah, I've got a question. The study that you did on, on food truck fees for surrounding communities, where is 250, what does that?
Higher than most.
Most are all, almost, except for maybe more.
I don't have this even for you, so, it happens to say most, but not that we can tell.
Yeah, so we went from saying no regulations at 150 RFP to regulations one day a week and now 250.
Okay. Any other question, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Kajekin?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Klein?
Aye. How's your day?
Hey, tell us, Eric, before Toby gets home, hang his house. I'm not gonna tell him. Maggie, I heard, can't live. All right, next act. Uh, next act. Next act. Mayor, we have an ordinance incorporating into the village employee handbook, policy prohibiting sexual harassment in conformity with the Illinois Workplace Transparency Act of 2019. Uh, this is an act that was passed by the legislature, it requires us before the end of June to enact an ordinance, and then to have proper training for all village officials and employees by the end of the year. Any questions, comments?
We don't have anything in the board handbook about sexual harassment.
This is some of state legislature, just making us, uh, we just have that data.
Yes.
Like, I swear to God.
We did.
This is like the second or third time that it's come from the field that we've had to pass something to manage it in the fall or, in recent years. Any other question or comments? I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 20-19, an ordinance incorporating into the village employee handbook, September 2019 provisions, a policy prohibiting sexual harassment in conformity with the Illinois Workplace Transparency Act of 2019, so.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Reed? Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Motion passed, zero.
Mayor, we have an ordinance amending the village's zoning regulations for various business districts to allow residential uses above the ground floor level. This has been discussed at length on the board for several years, uh, the zoning board did act on this at their last board meeting, uh, with a little bit of confusion, I would say, for what's presented for today tonight, uh, which helped with trustee Klein, who was at the zoning board the last time, uh, this was clarified and applied to B1, B2, and B3, it would, uh, allow all the existing residences to be legal and weight parking requirements that are not able to be enforced in the neighborhood. This issue would be biased.
Their parking regulations would not be able to be enforced.
Uh, there, there are provisions, uh, that, to the current ordinance, uh, I'm not sure if it's left in the ordinance, it requires, I want to say something, uh, if you, if you don't provide parking through, through your apartment yet, paid the village $2,000 or $1,500, but there's a schedule of payments, uh, that had never been collected and really not been practical to plan, for not being able to provide parking for you on the, for your own.
It's a search or. So, under, this is page last, but, on the amendments, or agenda supplement, the second page of that, so are we saying that the single family dwellings, at least two parking spaces, two family dwellings, at least two parking spaces for each dwelling, that that will no longer apply?
Yes.
So, again, I want to understand, of course, voting on it, right, uh, if I'm above the Rose Garden, and the owner of that building does not have to provide any of that parking spaces.
That's right.
So I'm aware when I'm not allowed to park in State Street or on side roads, I live there, as a resident, I have no protection and no parking.
No.
You're part of.
I'm supposed to be able to park.
Isn't there an exception?
No, yes.
No, that's okay.
But it's not. Or even in a public lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's exceptions.
Yes.
There's some, there's.
If you don't have a garage or a driveway, you can apply for a street parking.
And you pay it, pay it like a plaque or something.
Yes, on the mirror.
And there's no cost to the resident for that?
No cost.
It's still wanted to be where it's something, ransom, you know, some people are like teddy bears.
Right, and I think that this is kind of the way you have to operate, right, in case, so it's really just correct me.
So they should have been paying a fee all this time, and we haven't collected a dime?
It's been on the books, so.
Man.
Pull out your chain, sorry. Any question or comment?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, and I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 20-20, an ordinance of zoning regulations for village business districts to allow residential uses above the ground floor level.
So move.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
One more question, maybe for Christine, what is, um, on section eight, six dash eight dash two, B1, B, yards shall be provided in accordance with the requirement for the B1 central business district, does that mean, what, what requirement do you have for B1 central district business, or central business district? Right above the strike, uh, the strikeout of the off-street parking shall be provided? That means, or, but I would address that.
I don't have my zoning regulations here with me at home. So I'm, I think in the B1 district, they're very minimal.
I don't know if anybody in B1 central business district has any yard, do they? Unless, or, or, that's why I'm wondering, whatever, shall be provided?
I have to look it up.
However, the requirement for our, for general residential district is what is required in B2.
This is for B1.
B1 is no front yard, uh, no side yard, and a rear yard of 20 feet.
So for anybody in the B1 central business district, for them to have a dwelling on the second floor or higher, they must have a rear yard of 20 feet?
Well, every, every building in a B1 district has to have a yard of 20 feet, regardless of the residence or not.
So that's, so like.
I'm sorry, front yard in B2 is 10 feet, uh, side yard is, uh, not less than five feet, and a rear yard is 20 feet, and in the B3, uh, the yards are the same as B2. But that applies whether there's a residence or not, it's kind of restating the obvious. I guess what it's saying is, the fact that you have a residence doesn't change your yard requirements that otherwise apply in that district. For the building.
Okay, so that B2 means where Rose Garden, again, today's harbor was a dollar shore, did they need a 20-foot backyard?
Is it space in between the, is the alley considered back porch? Well, so, for most of those businesses, though, there's space between the quote-unquote alley and the back of the building, so, and that, so, like, at, at the back of the alley, we used to put our dumpster right behind the building, and it wasn't in the alley.
Well, my final comment on that, Mr. Kelly, would be that I think that regulation was probably enacted in 1985. I have no idea how many of those buildings that are in B1 or B2 predate 1985, but I suspect quite a few, and they would, if they do not satisfy the, uh, yard requirements, then, uh, they'd be grandfathered.
But if there was somebody that built new buildings off of states.
Yeah, that's correct, those are the, those are the rules currently in effect for any new building.
So, Mr. Schuster, just to make sure I, I'm, I'm understanding too, when we pass this, uh, ordinance, if it's referencing another ordinance, that puts them in violation, so long as they're grandfathered in the other ordinance, they're therefore grandfathered in this ordinance?
Well, I think what you might be referring to is if, if somebody attempts to establish a residential use above the ground floor in an existing building in the B1, can they do that if they don't meet the yard requirement now?
Correct.
Is that what you, uh, I'd say, uh, no, they cannot.
Really?
You're banned and non-conform use.
Really, what's the point of this language? No, 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 the yard itself, the yard language specifically, or what's the purpose of it? If none of our buildings, as they are right now, conform, and the only place that somebody's gonna put a historic building would be.
If none of our buildings, as they are right now, conform, and the only place somebody's going to put a historic building would be like on State, right? But, you know, unless I can see into the future and then they, you know, put one right down through Ave Parkway or something like that. But I don't. I don't understand why we have language in an ordinance that doesn't need to be there.
And I I'm looking at the B two central district. I think your house may be in R two, if I'm reading this. No, I think your house is part of B two.
It was. I had it re-zoned.
So there's houses on there that are B two.
At one time they were businesses.
Yeah, our whole zoning ordinance has a lot of. A lot of work that needs to be done. Maybe if we talk about that on the board or anybody.
If they have each other a hundred for eight.
A lot of money.
Yeah, and I get it, but we're referencing other zoning rules as a part of this ordinance? Wow. Is what we're saying that's okay?
I think what really is it saying is that just because we're allowing the residents above, we're not going to make any modifications to the ordinances that already affect that building. That that's to me, as I read it, is whatever was allowed in the B one central district, district, excuse me, is still allowed there. So just because we're allowing residents above. Above there, um, doesn't, we're not going to then change the rest of the ordinance that affect the building. I think that's the only reason that line is out there.
I would say yes, I learned this word. Yes, and. The bank across the street or the old bank building that becomes hers, she wants to make that top floor to do an apartment, her that she won't be allowed to anymore. She's not grandfathered.
Well, it.
That's a building. But it's not, it's not, a sale happens, it's a, it starts overdue. And the grandfather don't go along with the building.
Can I just talk about this? If there's a desire to consider what the existing yard requirements are in that facility, we take a look at that. We should do that step and do a study, see what's existing now and maybe bring that portion.
No, I would up speed also. I'm not saying we need to do a bunch more work. I'm just personally trying to make sure that we're not. I think it's a good thing to tell people they can have a residence above the building. I don't want this to then come back and be used to tell somebody who's new to say, well, since it wasn't a residence up there before, you can't do it now because there's a yard apartment that'll never be back because you back up to it now.
Right. Been doing this for three and a half years, but I think happens in that situation is they come here and say, hey, this variance doesn't make sense, right? All these other buildings are doing it. I like it variance now, of course, if these that come with that.
Yeah, it's a $500.
Well, I mean, but I don't know that we're going to fix the whole.
Yeah.
Right, it's just so much, it has so much effects.
It's guidelines.
Yeah, we can't really pick and choose on variances.
Right.
I get it.
Yeah. It's like doing a.
Sounds like. I got me toxic. That's not the. Mr. Schuster, thank you for helping me understand.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? All right. Go, Paul. Matt and Clark.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
No.
Ms. Klein. I'm, Mr. Coe.
Obstaining. I don't understand it enough. That's all yes or no, abstaining. Present.
Mr. Kechy.
Hi.
Motion passed. Four.
Four, one.
Four, one.
Four to one.
One, 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 one.
I have to dramatic. I know it's passed, but just I don't think it needs a vote on EU reference. It should be governed by the following regulation. I think it strikes through the regulation. It probably strikes through. Off-street parking, B one central district.
Off-street parking.
And then the area below it, what you say governed it is going to strike out. It's passed. Because you probably don't need to reference something that'll be blank below it. Just to, just to know, I don't, I don't think we need, I just saw it. I don't think it's something you need to vote on because you're basically saying let's reference this rule. It's fine. Just when it gets that done.
All right, someone else.
Mayor, we have an ordinance for the disposal of off-street property. I don't defer to this lines.
So we have a surplus lease vehicle that we'd like to get rid of, as explained in the. Agenda supplement, there is an offer for $6,600 to purchase that vehicle. We feel like that's very reasonable. And then there is some scrap material that's listed in exhibit A of the ordinance and pictured that is also in need of disposal, which we will scrap.
The cost of the price for the police vehicle, is that close to Kelly's blue book or anything?
Oh, like, you know, a blue book is like $45,000. I had to get that out of the.
With with all the equipment included, all the upgrades and everything?
The only thing that's included is a 20-year radar that's built into it and the lights, emergency lights that are 10 years old, which doesn't come close.
All right, so it's not like all of the upgrades.
So are we taking like the lump sum or the credit?
I would suggest the lump sum. Take the money.
And then you said we were scrapping the, the penny metal or we having a scrap? I'm getting it.
Um, they will, they will take it.
Yeah, okay.
Our, our people will take it.
Our people.
Yes, yes.
Any questions or comments? I mean, we have, they have one that, it's what are we meant for the zoning official or the code enforcement officer that now the water department uses, is it better or worse shape? There's already.
That's worse shape, but.
Yeah, we're, we're planning on probably discussing that. We'll bring a couple more vehicles forward in the future. We just have this offer and wanted to get the police cars done before the offer went away.
Very cool. We have a couple of village employees who are proposing to take at least one, maybe two of those vehicles, including a very old pickup truck that we retired recently from the. Water insurance department. They'd like to get some local services for businesses and fix it up. So we'll be bringing that for you and probably at the next.
Any further questions or comments? All right, and I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash twenty-one. Ordinance authorizing sale, ordinance mode will observe property owned by the village.
Go, Mike. Ooh, I'm too slow.
Is that a little bit of a. We have some.
Further questions or comments? Go, Paul, please.
The wifi in Toby's pool isn't working that fast. It looks like I'm in my kitchen. I'm in his pool.
Big background?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Hi, hi, Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Kechy.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Come with that.
Mayor, I don't think this requires a lot of explanation. I just want to thank the board members for all their suggestions and the businesses that are here today. There's been really a lot of cooperation going into. Bars and restaurants in town, a lot of cooperation, a lot of calls asking permission, but it really wasn't required. We have been in touch with each restaurant, each bar and let them know what the stakeholders would, might tend to comply with. We did not ask the board to set any regulations. Uh, we just published the governor's guidelines and to this point, I'd say there's been 100% compliance. Um, and only one case, Zmane Hans using their parking lot, divided up, but they've done very well there. And I think it's frankly been very successful. And really, the only thing that we've done to this administratively is wait for the requirement for a permit to have sidewalk seat, which only Copper Barrel has now and red eyes. But that's been, that's part of the guidelines from the governor. So, uh, I just, I just really, it's been a real team effort, not so much staff. Uh, the street department has been very helpful. The park history's been very generous with tables. And to this point, it's been, I think it's been very rewarding. I really enjoyed having my first lunch outside last Friday.
All right. Public relations.
We'll go back to that. Was there any, was there any discussion on closing State Street for the weekend? As we talked about that we're going to bring it up at this meeting?
Yes, I I'm sorry, I meant to address that. We did offer that to both the Rose Garden and Copper Barrel, and neither would take advantage of that if we're not to. So there was really no point in. We, it's still available. What we've been doing is is asking, as has Gina, that if you have a request to close the street, make their requests in writing, and I've proven those part in time. And so if there's a future request by either of the restaurants on State Street, we certainly consider that.
Thank you. Public relations.
Do I have? You must. Uh, it's been an interesting week, but I think that we're putting together as a village to try to make the. Put the bright foot forward in this situation, talk to the police department and the sheriffs and all that stuff to keep an eye out. There's really something to see last night. You know, last night, it's something that we've never done in our history, which is call it curfew and that kind of stuff. But. You, the, I'm speaking from the public relations side of things. I think that there's, there's a lot of positives, a lot of positive posts about things that we've done to proactively, you know, protect our residents. There's also a lot of negative things. All we can do is keep working together like we have been and try to keep putting our best foot forward and just address things as they come. To that end, I had a long conversation with the superintendent of District 300 Schools last evening about what next steps should be. And his, and my kind of thought was, is it a couple of weeks when this all settles down, school district 300 is looking to partner with us. Um, and the rest of the community and see if we can host a town hall, a joint town hall and bring in guest speakers and that kind of thing to talk about racism and, and climate and that kind of stuff and social media awareness and that kind of thing. And the partnership would allow us to. Do something digitally and speaking from the tech side of things, they're way more equipped to host a more digital town hall than we are. Um, just kind of the way it is.
That we're doing pretty good.
No, we, no, we are, but I'm saying that if they're going to open this up to the entire school district, which is a lot bigger than school district or the village. I think that we could be an active part of it, or if they're going to just open it up to the Hampshire High School student body or, or even our community, I think that. Think it's something that we should all, I really think long and hard about participating in because this is a, this is a very critical subject that we need to address and, you know, to pass, man, is part of our history, I guess. And so we need to. Figure out a way to address it and move on. Okay, because right now, all that has happened in the last 48 hours is pointing out that Hampshire exists and for the wrong reasons.
Yeah, I think the negative on the direction of the police department in the village yesterday was unobvial. I think that the community doesn't understand when we can't share all the information that we have for the safety of the community. And I was talking to Mike about it last night as we were trying to figure out and talking to Toby and how do we craft a message and what's our true stance and how do we feel and what people are saying and. You know, I, I kept, I know Toby was there when we got yelled at on the park board. Sometimes as a, as a village official, as any political official, you just have to take it on the chin and know that people are going to be pissed and you still can't talk about confidential information. And this, I think, is one of those cases. Had it happen on another board where we still can't talk about that information and this is another one, I would do everything the same way again. So I just want to say thanks to chief for coordinating everything and.
I had a lot of.
What all your guys did last night. It was a long day.
I had a lot of help everybody had hands on, so. Oh, sorry.
I think he wasn't repulsive. Kathy. Kathy Kathy. I'll help over here.
Any further, Sheriff? I don't know. Playing zone.
Well, before we get to playing zone, Mike, I had a, like a, this might be a public relations issue. I know we have that Nixle service and we do have, we have some community members not on Facebook, so they did not, they were not aware of the 7:00 PM curfew last night. So maybe in the future, if, if it comes to this where we have to implement a curfew or any other emergency message, we utilize, we utilize that service. Just a thought.
You know, chief and I just looked at each other. We probably did, it was just yesterday, it was one of the things that got missed.
Well, Nixle now has had increased their fees. They have a subscription fee for the text and instant communication such as Huntley has. It's several thousand dollars per year. I believe it's around 3,000 to subscribe to that where you can get an instant text to people. We can still do email. But we cannot do text.
Okay.
Pay for it. It's, it's a great. But it, it comes at a cost.
One of the things that we looked at in, in the past to, to that point is, um, you know, like a rapid communication system or reverse 911, because one of the things that came out of this yesterday is garbage pickupers today. So one of the questions that, that Aaron brought up in one of the conversations is, oh crap, should we just delay garbage day? Well, this all came down to five o'clock and we've had you dead with waste management, like saying we're not coming tomorrow because it's too cold or going to be too cold, and everybody still puts their trash out. We don't really have a way to communicate with our residents if we need to right now. So maybe that's something we take.
Well, and that's why I bring this up because. Yesterday, yesterday was kind of an emergency situation and then some people did not get the message. So like, for instance, I was out telling my neighbors like, hey, I, I'm guessing you guys didn't hear that there's a curfew right now. You should probably go inside. And they're like, no, we had no idea. So. Maybe investigating that might be a good thing.
And we did, uh, we did our best to get ahold of Joey and.
Absolutely. No, I'm not, you guys, we, you did a great job. Absolutely. I'm just trying to think forward for the future here.
Eric, I think you have a great point you're bringing up. And a question that I would add is, is that, is it Nixle?
Nixle.
Is Nixle a rapid communication system?
It's similar, but there's some limitations too.
You have to sign up for it.
Well, yeah, we have to pay for it. I mean.
The user has to.
It's not automatic to your.
So it's not like a geolocation anywhere in this area?
No.
We need to, we need to find a way to utilize the information that we have on files and to fill it all. Because we have anybody that has. Remember as an email address.
That's, that's not true, and that's something we are working on. In fact, we're just working on new water bill applications right now, and we're going to start trying to collect that information from all the library has there. We use the library's, uh, email list when you try and get messages out. But I really believe you're right, the others should have that information. So we're going to start asking for that from all of our water bill customers.
I'd be curious if there's a, a software, a tool, a certain consumer that does like the geofence of an area that says.
We'll look into that.
If, if we send out, because I'm, I'm not thinking just for like this type of information, but flooding warnings, water on roads, tornadoes.
Yeah.
Right? If I'm hard of hearing and I can't hear a tornado siren, if my phone lights up, right, and I'm thinking about accessibility for others, that might be something for me to ask you. Like, how do we give something like that? I don't know.
Well, like, I'm, I'm signed up for Nixle right now, so I get alerts from Huntley for severe weather, for, uh, road closures, for everything they need to send out a message for. So, yeah, I agree with you.
We've always had, we've always had the free service. They've always paid for theirs.
Right.
But I think that the chief makes sense if, if there's companies.
I think Nixle would, would work for us if we put a campaign out there and get people to be more aware and to help them sign.
Like to a mailer and.
Right, or just, you know, social media and, you know, put something in the water bills or something. It is easy, but it's just getting them to actually do it. It is a good system. Huntley overuses it. In my opinion, a lot of people say they kind of tone, they wish they would tone that down. We were, when, when I did have the service, we used it for the accidents, road closures and, you know, stuff like that. We kept it at that level. It was great. But then again, it became pus.
So, so you want to have a PR meeting, you talk about the rapid communication system?
Yes.
You just let me know when, you just let me know when you're available.
Uh, for the middle of June to the second week of August, I'm not. Okay, so then. Yeah.
Australia?
I'm gonna go out of capital. You can be a robot.
I'm business. I'm business.
Yeah, I can.
I can dial it. I'm on my way, doesn't require it.
Right now. Right now. Yeah, but business is making up. Anything further on planning and zoning?
Uh, no planning and zoning. No planning and zoning.
Referred to the chief. By county in the state altitude.
Well, obviously, as you know, things started kind of weird yesterday. They rapidly changed to, uh, weirder, if you will. And about midday, started noticing there were some, some threats of looting being a towards him. Uh, at that moment, I reached out to the major crimes task force. There's a commander there that was working the protesting in Aurora and Detavia. He happened to be in the Illinois State Police Command van and everything, had his fingertips. He ran some names for, from some Facebook people that were making some threats. Uh, they, they did come back as known. Uh, so throughout the day, we also made contact with LG and PD. They had four specialists working on the social media, basically investigating, keeping an eye on what's being talked about. And around two o'clock, uh, we found that there was quite a bit of chatter and, and commenting about Hampshire in the, in these groups. I also received a call from the general manager, the TA, that they had anonymous person called wanted to use art of protest with more than a hundred people. So that information, the, uh, some of the hierarchies amongst the state counties had this discussion. Talked to the, the people with the social media investigations and decided that it was a credible threat with the insurance. And that obviously reached out to the political structure here and we decided to go ahead and, and move on that. And several phone calls and everybody was gracious enough to allocate services out there. County Sheriff can't say enough and Henry County, State Police Districts Two and Fifteen, we had this area saturated. So it was pretty cool. Thankfully, it didn't happen. Uh, but I, we did notice some traffic throughout town that didn't look, you know, like, like they belong, belong here. I, I don't want to let them say scouting, but we did have the Bearcat, uh, the, our vehicle from county going up and down the state. So, I'm Mark Cars, Mark Cars, and I think everybody appreciated the cautiousness. And my guys all came in and we stayed light.
I, and I think, one, I said, thank you, you know, earlier to it, but thank you again. I think it's important that we also publicly stay here. This was not about protests.
Oh, no.
Because that was the native stuff that happened on, on social media. And I think it's because we can't give all of the information during the incident, right? But this wasn't about stopping anybody's First Amendment, right?
No, no.
Protest or do anything like, it was, it was the fact that we had a credible threat against the village.
It was looted.
From multiple sources or damage. And that's why we brought up the trash. I didn't think that everybody's trash house was going to be the safest. But the people were looking to come do damage.
That's all we have under public safety.
That's it?
Quiet week for ya.
Peel off the trail.
Oh, wow.
You gonna follow that up with a?
No. I'm running on Friday afternoon on the trail that I'm responsible for and I sprained my ankle. Like seriously. And I'm lying on the ground in so much pain and people are trying to help me and then I pick, sit up and I'm like, and then, um, Nice, but as I was driving along, I go, I can't even complain to anybody about this. This is fundamentally my fault.
So I reported this. I saw you in the back of the pickup.
Oh, you, you, they dragged the back of the truck? No, I got.
No, he was sitting at the back of the.
I was sitting for a while.
Oh, I was gonna say.
No, other than that, the, so the trail, trail, I think it was a sewer cover. I, I would actually look there's no hole. Other than that, no.
You should at least say there was a hole.
All I know is I was running along in the cloud. I was on cloud nine, enjoying the day and all of a sudden it's like somebody shot. People ask me all the time why I don't work out. Everyone, everyone gets hurt when they work out.
It's, it's true.
Village Services.
Old sock then.
All I have is I received a letter from Mr. Kirchner at Waste Management. It is time for our annual Waste Management rate increase. So the new rates, they didn't really go up too much, but they still went up. Uh, non-senior monthly rate is now twenty-one, twenty-seven a month. From, from twenty forty-five or twenty fifty. I think they're all less than a dollar a month rate. It's a what?
It's a three percent.
Three percent, which is in our contract.
Yes.
It's not on any pages. We took these numbers out. We, we agreed when we signed it. Uh, senior monthly rate is thirteen. And both of those include the new Illinois Fuel Tax. Uh, and then the at-your-door collection, special collection is a dollar and forty-four, which is three percent higher than what was last year. That you can still, as residents, use all you want.
You'll have to bring that forward because the age still needs to have a little bit of room in there to filling and the postage and those types of things. So.
This is what Waste Management is charging us.
That's what the Waste Management is charging us. I wanna make that clear.
And they, this will be effective, should I first, twenty twenty?
Well, good.
I got to like that.
So can we get Comcast figured out?
That's right. Uh, they, uh, the latest delay was blamed on us. They said we thought Village Hall was closed and we couldn't charge behind your building. So I, I didn't really buy that, so I pushed back pretty hard today. Latest thing until this construction will be finished July fifteenth, so we'll be in touch to connect you after that. Wasn't really satisfied with that, so I pushed back today.
I thought they did this whole area.
Yeah, I did the same thing. So I, I went back to, this was not from the government relations people. This is some construction coordinator out of Atlanta. So I pushed back today to our two government relations people. Uh, and I expect to get your back from them tomorrow. It's just about the service to Village Hall and the police department.
Public Works. Uh, not to report other than they're still bailing themselves out from all the water and from all the flooding.
BDC.
Um, we're busy as usual. Um, just a couple of things to report. The seminar series that you guys approved, we are completed four out of five. And they're top fifty-five. Uh, all that documentation is being stored on SharePoint, so that we'll have it for future reference. Uh, since you paid for it, we wanted to obviously own it. Um, we've got some facade program applications that will be coming in. Uh, Bill Smallwall has done an outstanding job, um, working with, uh, potential applicants. Um, the Guardian Angels is looking to put in another application. So that will be coming to be located soon. Um, so we'll have an opportunity to review it. It appears to be for landscaping. Um, I'm not sure, you know, where that will end up at this point. We haven't met on that, but we know that that has been initiated. Christine Michelle has already set, uh, for the new salon. I've already met with Bill Smallwall to go over her proposal. I've seen the, the proposal. It's nothing I need to show to you at this point, but I know it's cool. I mean, it looks like a really nice enhancement over the existing buildings there now. Um, I do wanna say a special thanks to Sashin, the personal owner of Tuscan Wine and Sun. He had donated to the Village Hall a large audience invitation. Um, so I did wanna say thank you for that. Uh, Jeanie Meyer and I have just completed. I wouldn't mind sending it around to anybody else. We're trying to make a catalog of all the businesses in town. Um, so I've, uh, there's a lot more than you think. Uh, we were quite surprised at how big the list got eventually. Um, so we'll be sharing that with the group here eventually. And then finally, Dave Fizlato is always, has crafted a really nice survey. One of the thoughts that our commission has is how can we help businesses now that the world has changed? You know, we expect that, you know, the, some of the things about the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, some of those changes might be permanent going forward as far as people working from home and maybe being more remote and things and finding out ways that we can sort of help people. Um, so one of the things that was suggested by the board was, uh, maybe coming up with things that we can help coach businesses and helping them um, to adjust to the city norm. So, um, we've got some suggestions. So our next meeting is June tenth, where we'll have our new member, hopefully will be present. She'll be auditing, um, the next two meetings if she wants to join and she'll bring that to you guys. On that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Wine and it says a couple of.
Yes. We have a little error on the, um, report from last meeting. That was the deadline one that was in the beginning. Um, do you understand that?
There you go, your red box area.
There was a, there was a credit that was more than what we owed and that credit was not taken in an account on the totals.
Oh, didn't, didn't.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
No. No. So I have to make a motion to correct, right?
Oh, correct the, correct the total.
Correct the total for non-employee, non-elected official accounts. So I will make a motion to approve the correct amount of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents.
So we're second.
What? Question?
But I don't know where to ask it because it's on the new one, but it deals with what exactly you're talking about. That credit is again reported.
Yes. So what happened was, um, last time it netted to a negative check. And so we couldn't issue a negative check. So we removed it from the list. This is your new total. And then, uh, now our charges exceed the credit and we're actually gonna write a check. So it's included again. So it's just completely removed from the last report altogether.
But it's, it's.
The credit and all the, on all the bills, and now it's on the new one.
So you just kinda took it off that one altogether?
Yep, took it off altogether.
So are we just approving the title page?
Yes. Yes, you're just correcting the amount that was paid.
That's where I was confused. I'm like, why are we giving this credit twice?
You're just correcting the total that was paid. It's an additional two thirty-nine cents.
Roll call please. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Big Jackie.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Wish you success.
Thank you. Now we have our regular accounts table. We have a couple of reimbursements, actually one. Um, we're gonna reimburse eight-four dollars and forty-one cents on a report June tenth, twenty twenty. Questions? So I make a motion to eight-eighty-four thousand, forty-one cents on a report June, June twenty twenty.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call please. Mr. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Big Jackie.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Wish you success.
Then our accounts table with the charges back in there from what we just corrected, um, for a total of two hundred and thirty-two dollars, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Questions?
Just one question. On the previous one, uh, carpenter mosquitoes.
Yes.
We paid them.
Yes.
We paid them quarter.
Um, it's two installments.
Okay. And they, cause, cause he doesn't return my calls and they haven't been here, I don't think.
I would have expected them to.
Mosquito showed up.
Oh, three times.
I know the mosquito showed up. Can we get a schedule from that on when we'll show?
No, Jack calls me and says, hey, we're coming Thursday, next Thursday. I told Mike so we posted.
But we prepaid up.
Yes.
It's typ, they typically run.
Well, I get into this business. Where you get a prepaid? And I don't have to tell you when.
Oh, they call, they call.
Any other questions?
Yes, page eight.
Page eight.
J and L asked me to make fourteen thousand drainage improvements, drainage improvements. They also showed the, uh, the, uh, lake wood.
No, this was. It's a bunch Kelly wrote. It was a, it was a project that the village participated with, um, with the council.
Yeah, we voted on that.
So this is our portion of what the entire project was?
Yes.
It was a while ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
She keep up on things that are named.
Uh, JL, I knew that.
Kelly wrote.
Well, so when this was approved though, did, was that approved for the fiscal year in which it was approved or wasn't approved? Approved to come out of this fiscal year? How does that work?
So we really tried to get the job done. We did not control the project. Um, the county did all the engineering for the project and did the bidding for the, for the deal. And, um, we contacted them, I don't know. They, well, they contacted us several times over the course of time and we really tried to get it in. We.
Actually said they were trying to get it in.
Yeah, they really tried to get it in and it was done like May third, fourth, fifth. It was all after that. It is, it will be in this fiscal year. Any other questions? I make a motion to pay two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-four cents on a report June tenth, twenty twenty.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Roll call please. Mr. Big Jackie.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Wish you success.
You funny, you sound like you want to war.
Like you.
Nothing further.
Nothing further. All right.
New business to other announcements. Or we adjourn?
Oh, we don't have.
Yeah. I have, well, I have one thing. Sorry, Mike. Um, I don't know if you guys saw what Carpenter'sville has been doing recently. They, um, now I know this wouldn't apply to us because they have much more business, but their board recently approved a program where if you spend three hundred dollars at a Carpenter'sville business, then you will get fifty dollars off your water bill. It's a one-time only thing, but it's in, uh, in the hopes of generating business to their community. And I think it's called like, I, I can't remember what it's called, but it's something about bring back business to Carpenter'sville. And it overwhelmingly was approved by their board. So I, I don't know if we would be interested in doing something like that in our community. I know we can't do something on a scale of like spending three hundred dollars at a local business because we really don't have a local business where you could probably spend that kind of money, but maybe something on a smaller scale to help bring business back to Hampshire.
Invite the players to the game or something.
Eric, uh, I think that's a good point. So BDC on our agenda, they're, uh, that's a topic that we will be talking about at the June tenth meeting. So we were looking at St. Charles, St. Charles, St. Charles Cares. It's an idea of sort of, uh, someone who better, lack of better terms, uh, one of those discount car. You know, that, it's what it looks like if, you know, frequent one of these and, you know, some kind of rewards. So that is on the agenda to be discussed in, uh, on June tenth. We will have something for you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, we, uh, Mr. or trustee Kelly wanted to talk about shit.
Actually, I have two, no, I have two things I want to talk about. So, uh, one with Toby, trying to pull up the address. So for village service, or, or, uh, village public works, uh, we have, and my neighbor across the street asked me, process, and I talked to her about it this winter at ten twelve, Peregrine. They took out our mailbox. They also took out the, of their neighbor's mailbox right next to her. They've replaced his. They haven't replaced hers or helped her. She's bought a new one. She's gonna have to put it up. I'm helping put it up. Like, I told her she can get her for, I think it's on.
Her went up.
But she said that she's called, uh, Mr. Sherret five times, hasn't gotten her return phone call and nobody's answering her calls. So I wanted to bring it to your attention. It's just, and I wanna make sure I told her correctly. We have like a, a mailbox replacement that's right. It'll be just ten twelve.
It'll be tomorrow. Dave's been, Dave's been, uh, you know, right when they get done with one catastrophe, another one kicks in. Yeah, no, and I know they've been.
Uh, yeah, no, and I know they've been swamped. That's why I'm just bringing up, if it's more of a, she gets reversed, I'll walk across the street and I'll put it up. I don't care.
Reverte twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, I think she's bought like a plastic replacement. I never would have amounted, I just want to make sure.
Twenty-five bucks.
Yeah. We're, we're talking about a, a, a nice little old Sicilian lady that keeps everything and will tell you everything going on in the neighborhood. Uh, thank you, sir. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is what we talked about at the very beginning is a discussion to whether we can or cannot have Mr. Hedges make a decision based on P. Back to Schuster and another, the two of you talk to currently waive so many variance fees for the side shed only until the ZBA can be to work out the language you need to pass. Is that something we have to wait for as a board to allow Mr. Hedges and Mr. Schuster to make a legal determination on if it's allowed or not, or?
Just understand your, just understand your suggestion that, that we still have to go through the variance process, but we'd be.
Correct, no five hundred dollar fee, they still have to apply to say, here's what we want to be able to do, but there's no five hundred dollar fee for it. It's because we've, I think we've all agreed that that ordinance needs to be reevaluated. It sounds like the language still may not be working, rather than somebody can, residents continuing to wait on a known issue. I think that's an easy.
I can rather resolve it, I would have showed it though. I would have put it up.
I would have done the same thing.
So I have nine months.
My only question is, have it, are there people that have already paid the fee and been given a variance? Or does none of these people?
Not about the sheds, no.
So nobody that has a shed.
Anybody, not about the side yard issue. The only people that have sheds in the wrong places are ones that didn't wait nine months to do it.
Good ninety-one sheds that are updated, not good.
We had at least nineteen that are side yards.
There's at least nineteen that are side yards. Out of the ninety-one that we've seen, I cannot tell you if they were permitted or not.
You're saying ninety-one.
Right.
That, that's just from Centennial East. Right, we have that list, we, we looked at it, some are permitted, there's great, there are not. But even if you waive the fee, it still has to go, you're saying waive the fee, it still has to go through the ZBA variance process?
I think that's, I think going through the variance process is something.
Eric, is that what you said? So that originally for us to discuss, that was, because I don't know, can we just say that that's not a variance until the language is fixed, so we should allow it, or?
I, I'd like to know if, I'd like to know if Arizona gives you the power, and we gave him what's allowed him to do, and what he's not allowed to do, because nine months is a long time to wait for anything. I mean, well, health, I mean, I could have kids nine months, so, I mean, we, we just call it what it is, he came with a shed, I'm sorry, it, it sucks. And then we look how long we've been kicking around the, uh, upstairs apartment deal. Anything that goes through it only takes a lot of time. I understand it, that George Ross always said that we're going to move this fee a bit, but it's got to be something that we can speed up this process. We do it, we do it when a new business wants to get built, when Pet A was built, we did everything we could possibly do to, to take the roadblocks away and make it an easy change, an easy thing for a business to open. I can be doing it for people who are here.
Well, and I don't want it to seem as, and this isn't towards your family, I don't want it to seem as a one-off or somebody to, to James, or earlier raised a voice loud enough that then the board acted. That's why I'm saying this should be a, this situation that we address, so that if there are other families that wanted to do this, it applies to them as well. But I think it's something.
I mean, I would be interested in having Mr. Schuster and Mr. Hedges have, you know, extended conversations and see if.
Yeah, I mean, if they're doing that, or, yeah, I mean, just. Let me just, so next meeting we have.
I'm not sure there's a lot we can bring to you at the next meeting. We could go back to the zoning board and ask them for a different, uh, for a different regulation, but. All right, I also met with these two gentlemen yesterday, sir. And they do have a compromise solution that they'd like to discuss, so I could discuss that with them. Um, that would basically put the, require that the sheds be set back halfway through the depth of the house. So it'd be less visible from the street, and in Frank's case, it would pretty much be invisible from the street because yard drops down so fast, right? Um, so if that's something you're inclined to do, we could go back to the zoning board and ask them to do, to make that change. I'm not sure where the nine months comes from, there was no action taken, there was no application made of any kind.
I'd have the copies if you'd like to see them.
For what?
Where they denied permitting, and then we were here at the meetings twice, and then we were at the zoning board meeting, and then we went to the online zoning board meeting.
Yeah. Right, so my only point is that, that what happened nine months ago is applied for permit that was not permitted under our current ordinance. So it's taken nine months for, for the zoning board to meet and to come to the conclusion they did, and that was. That's where, that's where I'm at.
And that's where my frustration is, is that when this first came up, I, I remember we talked about it. This is kind of a nice second now, I don't say I wasn't on the board, I don't remember. I was here at that meeting.
I wasn't here, sir.
And we directed that the ZBA addressed this because this was a bigger issue. Whether the ZBA chose to address it or not, ultimately, to what Brian said earlier tonight, the board is the one that votes for the ordinance, it's not the ZBA, they make a recommendation. So if this is an ordinance change, there shouldn't be a reason why we as a board can't make a vote at the next meeting based on the conversation that you and Mr. Schuster had, or the ZBA, whether we want to accept it. We've gone against ZBA advice before, and we've gone with ZBA advice before, but we've given them plenty of time to resolve this issue.
They act.
And that's me.
At the last meeting.
Recently.
Yeah, eight, eight months later.
And all I can say about that is it brought to my attention in March, Thaddeus brought it to my attention because it was a pending issue. I asked, I asked the zoning board to deal with that. I, I actually petitioned the zoning board. The authority I did not ask for, by the way, that Mr. Schuster gave me, a zoning administrator. Um, so that's, that's what got it moving.
Well, and that's where my frustration.
And what we were asked to, what we were asked to address.
Board told the ZBA to take this up and resolve it. Nothing was done.
Well, and I, and what I would say is what was brought to my attention was corner lots. It wasn't until just recently when I met with Frank, uh, that I understood that it was, it was a request at least for nine corner lots. The predicament we were in before is there was no definition of what is the front of your house, so both side, both streets on a corner lot. So there's really no place you can legally put a shed on a corner lot, period. Um, so what we were trying to address is corner lots. I was unaware that there was any issue other than that, that, that was brought to me by Thaddeus. I think what's happened here is that last summer, Thaddeus came in, he's, he's much, uh, he's really terrific at what he does, um, and, uh, so he's been doing his job. And then I, I've been doing my job, so we've been enforcing the ordinances in the village and, uh, asking for only approved permits that are legal within the ordinances. So I said, I would, you know, I would suggest that it's up to the zoning board and the village board to set the laws in the village. It doesn't really have to be administrators. It's up to me to bring them to your attention and make suggestions. Uh, and with your suggestion, happy to waive things from time to time, but this is a, you know, there, there are hundreds of sheds in the village, hundreds, thousands of sheds probably in the village, some that have permits, admitting they don't. And I can agree with you, I've seen the same list that Mary referring to. We were attempting to address those existing sheds and the ones on corner lots. But again, I will, I, there's been a suggestion, uh, I guess I would, um, not ask the board for a vote, but if there's a compromise that, that makes the appearance of the sheds less offensive from the street, um, then I'm happy to sit down with these gentlemen and do that. Uh, as the mayor points out, there are definitely a lot of people on the other side of the same issue, including their neighbors who have been very vocal. It's a joke about owning a piece of property, it's your life. And you know, I, I love my neighbors at the same time, but I really hate when they tell me that I can't do what I want. I'm not saying that I'm going to do anything outlandish, she's not looking to put up strobe lights or anything like else, she's looking to do what everybody else is doing. He's putting Christmas tree lights on. You know, I mean, it's the same argument, this is the same conversation we got into when we passed the appropriation of the ordinance. There was a bunch of people in here complaining that how dare we allow people to park their RVs on their driveway, or their boats, or their trucks, or whatever. It's your piece of property, you pay property taxes, as long as you're not doing anything unordinary, I don't see why you'd notice. I mean, for that matter, we have so many people that are out of zoning compliance, are out of ordinance compliance, whether it comes from downtown State Street, or whether you're walking up and down the street and you see a house with an advertisement for a business, because that's where his business is located, that's still out there and complains about it over and over and over. I'm just saying, so we're, my, my argument is always the same, it's always to, to your point, if we're going to do something, if we're going to enforce something, we need to do all of it. If we're going to make concessions, we can do it all the time. If we're going to make these changes, we have to be cognizant of the decisions that we've made this week. The point that we like to make is that right now, what's being requested is that anything behind that part of your house, on the side yards or the rear yards, rear yards would be good. And, uh, that's a convenience for people primarily to have side loaded garages, like both of these gentlemen do, both of these families do. Right. And so they want to put the garage at the end of the driveway, but it's in, it's in the side yard, it's not in the rear yard. So, and they do have, um, issues with elevation, they have a lot of, um, hills in their yards, and like everybody else in town, we all have water.
But, I, I see, see, to me, I agree with that, like, the ordinance itself is perfectly, I mean, the most compliant, it's just the side loaded garage that makes it strange. Right, because normally that would be a backyard, but because of the construction of a house, I, that would be more for just modifying the ordinance to add language that would sort of speak to side loaded garages.
Side load and, and corner lots.
Or, yeah, corner lots, I mean, not a lot of corner lots, I mean.
I, I live on one. Side load garage.
Your slab, if, if, if somebody has a corner lot or, or out of side yard where they have hills and they literally got to excavate to put the shed in, which they can do under permit, now you're going to alter, potentially alter the drainage. Why those hills are there?
No, I understand, now, again, that's where we really need, you know, experts, but to me, where you, where he wants to put it isn't the side yard, right? It's his backyard, it's just the way that the garage happens to be constructed that makes it, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
It's a legal, it's a legal definition in my mind.
Well, what we do is we define the front doors of front of your house.
Right.
So that does define side yard as a side yard regardless where your garage is.
Because the driveway takes up, I don't know, the driveway may be fifty feet, sixty feet.
Yeah.
From the apron, so it takes up the majority, if you're saying this is my house, right? That you're looking this way, and it takes up the majority of this, the side yard.
Right. Because to me, it's still backyard, as far as I'm concerned, and that to me is more of a, what makes this a unique situation is because, uh, what we're calling a side yard, by definition to me, is really backyard. And it should be a little right.
Uh, I'm in favor of it, but I, I don't know, I would rather not sort of, you know, cover by exception either, I think. I mean, it's a, it's a good compromise then to say, if you want the, the ZBA to consider the change of language to not just be corner, but also side loaded garage, and that until they present that updated language, there is still the variance process, but we waive the variance fee until that is updated.
Yeah, to me, I need waiving fees and things like that, I mean, we have to, I, we have to talk, but I, I, I am concerned about people adding pay those fees and now some of our work, but.
I don't, I don't think anybody's ever paid five hundred dollars.
That's totally fine, there's not a chance of creating, uh, you know, uh, some special, you know, consideration for somebody, then I, I mean.
And if there's no legal justification, there's no, it's sort of cost or expense, because all the time the fees are rooted in, an expense, right? Is, is town health and to pay the village's expenses. Now, if there's not five hundred dollars that we actually have to pay out, is that I don't think the rest of the taxpayers should have to pay that.
So, so here's.
That's what happens.
Here's, here's what, what I have to say about this particular situation, this is even some of the other ones. Okay, we effectively made a promise, right? Fundamentally, we as a, a, a board made a promise that we were going to get this taken care of, right? We were going to have the zoning board look into it to get it taken care of, right? One way or another, we didn't say we were going to fix this problem, we didn't say we were going to allow it, we said we were going to look into the situation and come up with a decision. That's what we said. Nine months later, we do not have that, therefore we have failed, period. I don't care any way you want to look at it, for this particular situation, we have let our residents down. And for that, we need to figure out a way to make it right. That's it, I'm sorry, we can't keep doing this. We moved heaven and earth, we moved heaven and earth to get Pet A accomplished in a short amount of time because they need to get that precast building ordered, or whatever they needed to do with that precast building, and we got it done in less than ninety days. But he can't build a ten by ten shed?
I, I'm not screwed.
It's absolutely unacceptable.
Toby, one, one more, one last thing, there'll be one more. Now that I'm writing a bike little more, I was on Panama. And. Wait, wait, where's Panama? Okay, over Panama, so Panama stay where all that flooding happens. Yes, almost every house on, on the south side of that street has their gutters and their sump pumps draining right to a stormwater cover.
Right.
Is that even equal?
Depends.
Uh, South Street, if you take, uh, state and drive down South Street, uh, there are sewer trenches that, that will, that you'll be airborne. And there, there's people up, down all the streets pumping out into the parkways or their yards, or, yeah, I think, I think what we hear from BS like this is taking consideration. Because even in the newer developments, like the one where I live, I'm, there's a, a newer house that just sold, and now all of a sudden there's some pump pipe goes across the sidewalk into the gutter of the street. That's where they pump their, like, kid.
That's not allowed.
You know, I, why is that not allowed, but I can put it in.
Yeah, because.
There is a sidewalk.
Exactly, exactly, I just said it, because when there are sidewalks in place, there's different regulations. I'm sorry, it's.
Probably be pissed off, your stormwater's not working. All you're doing is dumping all your roof water. There's a reason why there's grass around. I just worry. Your slip and silencer, it's all.
I will, I'll take it most torture.
So most. Second?
All right.